7:04 PM, meeting of the BUHS District 6 Board, Monday, April 6, 2015. Welcome, everyone. And we will start off as we normally do with the Clerk's Report and the approval of the minutes from our March 16th meeting. Is there a motion?
I move the Clerk's Report and the minutes from our March 16th meeting.
Second. Okay. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions?
There may have been.
And I noticed one as well.
I think they're keys.
Yeah, I think I was elected to the SU.
You were. I did the nominating, but I was listed as nominating and being elected.
Ah, okay.
Your name should be you or my name is in the minutes. That was what I -- that was my catch too.
And when we do get the final report or listing from Barb for our records, we want to make sure that she got it from them. I think she probably got it from Bronson, which hopefully means it's correct.
You know, this probably isn't germane right now, but I'll see if we can slip it through, which is, I don't think I was -- I've been serving on the SU Finance Committee and I don't think an appointment was made last time, so.
Isn't that appointment made out of -- from the SU Board?
It's made by the SU Board.
It's not made by this Board to their Finance Committee.
Is that right?
Their Board would make it to their Finance Committee. That's why it's not there.
So you have to double.
So that's why we didn't do it.
Not our job.
Mr. Chair, this may be less germane because the minutes didn't note any further committee assignments, but I did, and I was not at the last meeting, but I did see it on BCTV. And I've been off of the BAMS Committee for a long time, and that's why I haven't been to any BAMS Committee meetings. So if this isn't the time or place to make that correction, then I can see you after the meeting.
All right, well, I think we can correct that. Yep. So Laurie is off of BAMS. Okay. I'll make sure, I'll touch base with Barb and make sure we've got both of those corrections. So the three voting members for SESU are Ruth, Russ, and Pat. Okay. And, all right. Any other additions, deletions, corrections? If not, is there a vote to approve the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Opposed, or abstentions? Laurie? Okay. We move on to communications, and I believe we have a communication.
Yes, I got a communication just before I left for this meeting. It's a copy of the Rutland Northeast Supervisory Union Resolution Regarding the House Education Bill. And I won't bore you people with reading this whole thing, but I'll pass it around if anybody wants to look at it. And I'm sure that this will come up tomorrow evening at our Supervisory Board meeting. So if anybody has any concerns about it, please let me know. Or Russ, or Pat.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else for the Clerk's Report? If not, we move on to recognition of groups and visitors. I don't believe we have any groups or visitors tonight, and so we will move forward to consent agendas. Is there a motion accordingly? Sumo.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, none? Okay, we are in consent agenda, and we start with finance.
Finance Committee met on Thursday, March 19th at 8:00 AM as usual, and approved warrant numbers 1153, 1154, 1155, 1156, 1157, 1158, and 1160, total of $157,862.07. And we also approved warrant numbers 1161, 1163, 1164, 1165, 1166, 1168, 1169, 1170, and 1171, for a total of $402,798.12. We also discussed the snow plowing, custodial cleaning, and wood chip bids, and talked about endowment funds. And our next meeting will be this Thursday, April 9th at 8:00 AM in the James Cusick Conference Room at the Supervisory Union Office on Green Street. Anyone would like to join us?
I just might elaborate a little bit on the contracts. Our snow plowing, this is our third year of a three-year contract that has worked out quite well with the current contractor. And Frank had requested we extend the contract one more year, which that's part of the state bid law regarding schools and municipalities is you can extend another year without going out to bid. And we felt that it was worth doing that, and the same thing with the cleaning, custodial cleaning. And just some of you may not be familiar with, we have, the line share of our custodial cleaning is in-house, but we do have a contract with a Cheshire Cleaning for a, primarily over at the DIC, I guess?
Tick in this part of the building.
Right. And that was set up a few years ago, and that continues to work favorably, and it was recommended to the Finance Committee and approved that we continue that. We're in the process of developing specs for wood chips. It's getting time to start nailing that one down. And the other regard, Ruth mentioned the endowment funds, there will be requests for approval of resolution to establish bank accounts for both the endowment fund and for the capital fund, and I'll talk more about that when we get to new business. Okay. SESU Finance.
We've not met since the last, our last meeting, our next meeting is on the 29th of April. It's usually the fourth Wednesday of the month.
Planning and policy.
We have not met since our last meeting. We do have two policies that we'll be going over, and they're appropriate subsets.
Okay. We have one that we'll actually approve tonight, don't we?
Yes, we have one to approve and one for, and the dress code is in first read.
First read. Looking forward to it. Teacher Curriculum Committee.
It has not met since our last meeting, but I just wanted to say that I did meet with Mr. Perrin related to some things we talked about at our last meeting related to the changes to the course catalog and some of those things. So at our next meeting, I will fill in the rest of the committee related to some of the information that we didn't have time to go over at our last TCC meeting just because we ran out of time, that I got some clarification on, so I will share that with the rest of the committee at our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. BAMS Committee.
Has not met since our last meeting.
Okay. And WRCC has not met. Okay. Is there anything else for consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to accept consent agenda?
I move we accept consent agenda.
Russ? Second.
Second.
Ian? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, or abstentions? Seeing none, unanimous, and consent agenda is approved, and we move on to administrative reports. And let's talk to Student Council first. Tana's back with us.
Yes, the Student Councils, we're currently working on The Variety Show, which is the school-wide work. I'm gonna make it in conjunction with our Spring Fling, which we're having this year that some of your classes putting on. And we're also planning a second administrative lunch, which I think Oliver talked about a little bit a couple meetings ago. And we are currently in the process of drafting a constitution in efforts to make it more official for next year, Student Council and like the rules. So hopefully we'll have more regularity with people attending this meeting.
Thank you. Drafting a constitution? Maybe work. Okay, thank you. BAMS. Keith.
Hi, everyone. So a quick, a couple of quick updates. The Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium testing. We're gonna start that testing a little later than some schools. We're gonna start after the April break, and we're gonna do a couple practice sessions. We've kind of been working on schedules tomorrow morning. We're gonna try to fine-tune them a little more, but I am curious to see how it, kind of, all the technology plays out and how the test sessions run. And, you know? We, quarter four began today, so we're cruising right along here. Starting tomorrow, we're gonna be working up, the counselors, myself, and Ms. Curry are headed over to all the seminary elementary schools and meeting with the sixth grade classes at their schools and their classrooms. So we got, you know, Greenscreen, Academy, and all the various schools set up to visit for maybe an hour each school, just to kind of meet them in their own place. And then this Wednesday night, we have a big parent night where the sixth grade parents all come here, incoming sixth grade parents, and do kind of, we have this big slideshow we've been working on, just to try and go over kind of what the school looks, you know, what we're all about at BAMS. So the counselors and Ms. Curry have done a good job putting together that presentation. And so there's a lot of steps in this transition process. We, last week, we had some in-service time, the half-day on the Friday, we had a woman named Gem Scanchfield come in who's a local, she lives locally, but she travels nationally and works with schools. She's kind of a facilitator, she's an author, and she did some great professional development with us, really around teaming. In the middle schools, there's a lot of teaming that happens, and it was a really, we felt great about it, it was a fun day, but also got to know a lot about each other during that time. And on Monday, we, kind of taking some of the work that we've been doing with this grant that Steve and I have mentioned multiple times on proficiency education, we've been given this grant through the Department of Agency of Education to work with the Great Schools Partnership. And we're implementing, so we're taking standards and performance indicators that the state has recommended, and we're kind of going through them as departments, and we're determining if they're written well, if they're covering all the things that we want those standards to cover, and making agreement at the middle school level that that's what we agree upon. And then we're having, later in the day, we met seven through 12, and there was some really productive, so the English department got together, social studies, the second time this year that's happened. And a lot of teachers, I heard one teacher say, well, you know, in all the years I've been here, this is way more than we've done, so we're taking good steps to try to come together. And so I had heard really good things, I saw really good things in those meetings, very productive. Teachers really, really appreciated that time to get together seven through 12. And that's key to making that, some of the changes that are coming happen. Steve and myself and multiple teachers were up at Lake Maury last week, and two more days of training on this. The stuff we were kind of hitting on at this last session is quite a ways down the road, but interesting changes coming and exciting changes, so. I have a couple, well, one letter of resignation, which is, I think, pretty sad because he's resigning due to health reasons. John Beckhoff, who's, he's taken a couple, couple leaves, medical leaves, and so he's decided, he's very support, very thankful for your support during all his several years of leave, and from what I understand, he was a really fabulous teacher, and, you know, kind of sad for us, but it's also an opportunity for us to hire somebody, so I guess I'd like to ask for the Board to accept that resignation.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the resignation of John Beckhoff with regret.
Second. Second by Ricky? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd just like to, okay. He was a teacher at the Guilford School when my daughter was there, and he was incredible. And we saw him many, many, many years later at a party, actually. He remembered both our names, he just like, it was outstanding. He was just an amazing teacher.
Sure you'd like to hear that.
I guess I should, we should finish the vote though. I think we voted all in favor. That's fine. All in favor? And just to make sure there's no, okay. Sorry.
And we have another personnel move, but maybe you can.
Steve is gonna throw a special note.
Thank you.
Regarding the state standards that you've been reviewing, are those standards official from the state level yet? Or is that a work in progress that they're seeking input?
So here's the deal with them. They've, over the last couple years, year or so, they've put together committees that have come and taken the Common Core standards and tried to make them, even though the Common Core tried to whittle down and make the state standards more comprehensive, there's still many. And so the state has kind of consolidated them even more. And so they are, they're sample graduation proficiencies that committees have put together. So they have large standards, and then they have smaller, more detailed pieces called performance indicators, and they're recommended by the state. So what, and then, so we have all the freedom to adjust them as much as we would like. If we get too far off from what they recommended, I think it might make it more difficult, but... So we're tailoring them a little bit. We might add some language of stuff that teachers feel is missing, or, you know, maybe take stuff away or reword certain things. And so it's, they're recommended, and we can adopt them as we, we have flexibility.
So at the end of the day, there will be some flexibility as long as we are within certain guidelines.
Yep. Yeah. I wouldn't say there's any specific guidelines, the Common Course, the overarching guideline, yeah. So it's a, it's a really nice step to have consistency with it for us. And the piece that's added in is the transferable skills, which we've talked about, those are the habits of work, and those aren't part of the, you know, really part of the Common Core, they're separate, so.
And those are ones that will end up being evaluated, not so much on a number basis, right?
Ideally, long-term, we have a system that we report out separately, those things from the academic standards. And they're very important pieces, they're around work ethic, all that stuff, perseverance. So we're a little ways from that, but.
Good work. Okay, is that it?
Yeah, thanks.
BAMS? Okay. BUHS?
Sure. So our in-service, as Keith mentioned, we spent a lot of times working with BAMS, and that was, that was great, as Keith said, many of my teachers came and said they enjoyed the chance to kind of work with their colleagues at the middle school and kind of figure out, you know, if they agree on a certain graduation standard in a content area, what does that look like if somebody's meeting that standard in middle school, and then what does that look like in high school? And are there things that go from middle school to high school that we should kind of keep consistent? And so that was a good conversation. The other thing we did at the high school is, you know, we have these overarching state rec, or state sample transferable skill documents, and there's six of those. And you may recall that a few years ago, four years ago, we did our NEASC learning expectations, that are our school-wide expectations. So one of the things that we began to do at the high school is kind of compare those two documents. So we have our learning expectations that we wrote that right now currently guide what we think a graduate should, skills they should possess. And then we have the new transferable skill document. One of the things that we're doing right now at the high school is comparing those two documents and saying, you know, do these learning expectations reflect what we want? Is there anything from the transferable skills that we should take, that we should borrow? And so that's a process that's gonna go on for the rest of the year. And, you know, it's tough because a lot of people spend a lot of time and energy developing those learning expectations, so it's important you kind of respect the work that people put into those. So that process will go on for some time. In other news, I'm very excited that two of our teams at BUHS competed in the Junior Iron Chef up at Champlain Valley Expo, and they actually won two prizes. The winning team, which was the Jalapeno Hatties, not my idea, consisted of Melanie Smith, Caleb Perro, Sarah Gothier, Jaclyn Mendez, and Ashley McGuire. They made a pad Thai recipe that they developed and perfected. They won the prize for best use of local ingredients, which was kind of a nice prize. That includes a lot of cooking supplies, and also for each student, a $500 scholarship to take a class at NAC. The second team, which was called the Brat Pack, was Koby Bobrow, Gabe Veronte, and Scott Harvey. They made a sweet potato butternut squash soup with a beef puree. And both of these teams will be making their dish in our cafeteria to, for our students to sample. But on Wednesday, they'll be heading up to Montpelier for a State House tour, and they'll be preparing it for some of our legislators, so we're kind of thrilled for them to get some recognition. So it was great to see that. Sandy Cormier, who coached these teams, was thrilled, it's the first time they've actually won up there, and so she's just thrilled with herself and with her team, and she's very proud of her kids. I also want to thank John Ayer from Cafe Services for his support. You know, he provided the food, he provided some uniforms and then wear during the competition, so, you know, we're grateful to John as well. Our music band, our, yeah, that's one kind we have, went to the, went to the Educators Association Band Festival at Champlain Valley Union High School, and they received an overall score of excellent from three college band directors, and admittedly superior rating by a single point. In 50 of the 72 categories, they earned superior marks, so our band continues to impress everybody in the Northeast, and we continue to be proud of them as well. This Friday and Saturday, the BUHS players will present selled shorts. It's not a garment, it's a series of short plays. That would be at 7:00. That is, short plays that were written by Shell Silverstein.
When is that, Steve?
That is this Friday and Saturday at 7:00 in the auditorium. If the streets of Bradlboro seem a little empty after this weekend, it's because many of our students are traveling abroad. We have groups leaving this weekend for Germany and Switzerland, and they'll be gone for two weeks. And then the following weekend, we have a group that will travel to India over April break. And so we're excited for the opportunity they're getting, and hope they travel safe and come back safe. Finally, we did begin the SBACK testing today, and I'd like to say it went smooth, and for the most part it did. We had some difficulties with audio. I have to give a lot of credit to Nancy Johnston, who has worked very hard to create the schedule, one that allows students to not miss one class too many times, kind of rotates through, but one that also kind of gets us through the testing in a timely manner. The state published testing windows from March 17th to June 12th. And while that's an attractive big window, the reality at a high school is very different because right after April break, we begin AP testing for AP exams. We also begin the science and K cap tests, which don't go away. And so the reality for us is that are test windows now. We initially wanted to start earlier, but we're still waiting for final instructions from the state, so we're hoping next year, already we're planning for next year, to start in March, and hopefully all the directions will be in place. But it started, you know, Bob Whitberg and his assistant George Berninger have also been working hard to keep the technology working, and so we're anticipating the next nine days will be busy, but hopefully we'll keep our internet connection up and we'll be okay. Two personnel matters. One of them is a transfer. We've been looking for a French teacher to replace Maggie Cassidy, who's retiring at the end of the year. We had 31 people apply, six people interviewed for this position. The committee consisted of Assistant Principal Chris Day, Department Chair Karen Sebastian, teachers Karen Blakson and Hyun Woo, and our own Ruth Barton. And at the end of the day, they have recommended that we allow Suzanne Grenoble, who is currently the world language teacher at BAMS, to transfer to BUHS as our French teacher. So I would ask, I guess I'm asking the Board permission to transfer Suzanne from BAMS.
Okay. Is there a motion accordingly?
I move that we transfer Suzanne Grenoble from BAMS to BUHS.
Second. The French position is open. Second?
Second.
Ricky? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, or abstentions?
I presume it's all right with BAMS. I don't see Keith poking Steve in the eye or anything.
He just wanted to give me more work.
Took a little arm twisting. Secondly, I have a resignation. Math teacher David Seer has announced that he is going to retire this June, at the end of this school year, and he looks forward to still being here next year as a substitute teacher. He thanks us for his experience working here for the last 13 years, and, but would like the opportunity to travel and see more of the world. So I would ask the Board to accept the resignation of David Seer.
Is there a motion accordingly? Laurie?
I move the acceptance of the resignation of Mr. Seer with regret.
Okay. Second. Second. Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Seeing none, this is approved. Okay.
I have a question. Steve, on the SBACK test, did the state say that we're not quite ready, or they don't think the system is quite ready, so they're not gonna, they're not gonna use them for any kind of assessment or?
What they said is they're gonna use it, and we're gonna get the results back. They're not gonna use it when we do our AYP determinations for next year, so it won't be used for that. The reason given for that was that they felt that the transition to an online testing environment would take a year to get up and running. So we'll get results, and, you know, we'll be expected to, you know, analyze those results and adjust, but they're not gonna be used for AYP. All students are required, though, that have completed 10th grade are still required to take the test.
Yeah, I was, you know, I was wondering, if they weren't gonna be used for anything, it'd be a waste of time for the senior class, if the senior class is taking it.
Yeah, no, they don't, no, just juniors.
Okay. That answers my question.
So are we ditching AYP for a year?
No. Last time we did this, they used a formula that had to do with graduation rates. You know, I'm not sure what that formula is, but when we transitioned from NSREs to K caps, we used that, a different formula, so.
Any other questions for Steve?
Because AYP right now is like impossible to make, right? Nobody makes it, so we may actually have some schools that aren't, whatever that word happens to be, that use for the year. that word happens to be, that use for the schools that don't make AYP.
Right.
Good. Maybe it would be more accurate.
The only schools that didn't make it this year, this last year, were the ones who piloted the SBACK last year, could they have?[612.12][612.12][laughter]
I mean, and I think, you know, the state is talking about moving to what they call a balanced accountability model, and hopefully that, that will gain some more traction in the next couple of years where it's not just.
Right.
Well, the whole idea is that they use proficiencies in addition to other, in addition to testing measures.
Yeah.
I'm hopeful.
WRCC, what's going on over there?
All kinds of stuff, Woody. So spring is a chance for CTSOs, Career Technical Student Organizations, to compete in the annual spring statewide competitions. And on April 1st and 2nd, our Skills USA chapter traveled to Burlington, where five students participated in competitions. Students participated in the areas of criminal justice, firefighting, and architectural drafting. Trevor Hoole and Addison Clark competed in criminal justice. Teresa Snow, Twin Valley student, and Drew Downs competed in firefighting. And Leon Ogden, senior of BUHS, participated in the architectural drafting competition, where he placed first in the state. So congratulations to Leon. He now has the opportunity to travel to Louisville, Kentucky
Great.
This summer, right after graduation, and he will be competing against 50 or so other students his age for a lot of scholarship opportunities and tools and software they can win. So it's a great opportunity for Leon to participate in. Our FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America chapter also traveled to Burlington on, let's see, March 25th through the 27th for their spring leadership conference. And while at the conference, the students attended workshops and participated in performance events. Students also had an in-school field trip in which the 28 students took a total of 139 objective tests. At the awards banquet, the local chapter won the scrapbook award, the poster contest, and we were the largest chapter in the state this year with 100 members. We were also named the second-best chapter in the state, as decided by the annual business report. Individually, our students took 39 places in 25 events. The events we placed in were accounting, agro-business, business ethics, business law, business plan, business procedures, client service, entrepreneurship, FBLA principles and procedures, global business, healthcare administration, help desk, hospitality management, impromptu speaking, insurance and risk management, intro to business, intro to business communication, intro to information technology, job interview one, job interview two, management decision-making, public speaking one and two, securities and investments, and sports and entertainment management. So quite a lot of competitions. We are very proud of the commitment that the students have made to the organization and the successes that they have earned as a result of that. And a summary of that were 139 students, objective tests were 139. First, second, and third places were 39. Chapter scrapbook, we took first place. Outstanding chapter was second place. The largest chapter, first place, most enthusiastic, first place, and poster, first place. So congratulations to all these students. It's a great opportunity to participate in. They grow, and they grow extensively from the time they start until they become seniors. It's great to see them shine, and I was able to attend both of those sessions, with Skills USA and FBLA, so it's really nice. Our career center enrollment for next year is looking positive. It's, our sending schools' numbers are up 10 to 15% from last year, which is very nice to see, and they should be finalized here in the next few days. And I got to give a big thanks to Ann Dorn, our counselor, for getting all this work done and the tours that she spearheaded this year. So looking forward to next year. That's it.
It's big news to see grow the student population. Okay, thank you. Ron is not here, and there was nothing that got passed along to me at the last minute from central office. We, again, under new business, we have a couple of items that originate from the central office that we need to deal with, and I have nothing specific as board chair, so I believe that takes care of administrative reports unless I put someone out, which I get known to do occasionally. Guess not. Okay, we move on to unfinished business, and item A under unfinished business, there's policy review of F-30, which is pupil privacy rights. And tonight is the night that we are going to be asked to adopt it, is that correct?
That is correct, more or less.
More.
I'd like to make a motion on this policy, and then I would like to speak to them.
Sure, okay, go ahead.
I move that we adopt policy F-30 pupil privacy rights as written.
Okay, second. Sean, okay, discussion?
Despite that being the motion, I am recommending that we vote no. This policy, once again, we have another policy where they've taken all the meat out of the policy. It has no definitions. You can read that policy and not have any idea of what it's saying. It takes everything out and just refers it to the superintendent, which I think is a very dangerous precedent in policy. This is the second one we've seen. The last one, we simply added the definitions back in, but this policy, it permeates throughout, and it's the recommendation of the committee and my personal recommendation that we reject this policy and keep our current one, which is fundamentally the same, but includes all the definitions and details that you would need in opening up a policy manual and understanding what you're reading.
So this policy that you're recommending against was, came down through the SCSU then, correct?
Yes.
And which was obviously vetted through state guidelines and so forth. Do you know what the, what the logic was for?
We tried to ask and did not get any explanation as to why.
Isn't this the third reading of that policy?
This is.
So if we go along with the policy committee and, Woody, you're also saying, the second step of what you're saying is that?
Will be to re-ratify our current policy.
Oh, we have to have three readings. Yeah, that would probably have to go through the, through the procedures again, I would think, which we can. So at this point, and that's the recommendation of the committee, is that we not endorse this policy as written at this time.
Can I just ask what thinking was in terms of bringing it to a third reading? I mean, are you requiring, and not amending it so that it was something that we could approve? I'm just...
Unlike the firearms policy, where it was just one section that needed to get added in. In this one, the wording on everything was changed. It really needs a complete rewrite.
Yeah, I see that from the old one, yeah.
So I felt it's more than just an amendment?
Well, there's nothing I wouldn't imagine stopping us from voting against it if we're based on the recommendation of the policy committee against it, and then we would re-pass through the steps with the, what our current policy or an amended version of that and decide if we want to vote on that.
Can I say, did you go through the old policy, or you say you are happy with the old policy?
The intent of the new policy seems to be exactly the same as the specifics of the old policy. However, none of those specifics are given.
Yeah, well, no, no, I don't, I mean, I'm not trying to advocate for accepting something that you guys don't think is, is good. I'm just wondering if you think that there, the old policy as it stands is good, or whether you look at?
Yes, we had no objection, we had no objection with the old policy, or what we believe the intent of this new policy is. We also, I want to make note, I believe that Ron would uphold the intent that we are perceiving in passing this, but there shouldn't have to be that trust or assumption in a policy. The policy should be clear.
Any other thoughts or comments on that?
Well, I just want to say, I mean, Russ asked about the three, the three reading process, and I mean, as typical of policy, when the first reading came out, we all got a chance to look at it. So once the process got started, and the reason why this kept getting passed off so many times is because there was the attempt to get a clarification as to why the change, which we never got. There was never any explanation given to that, but we really, before, once the first reading, the first reading happens and then we start our work. So it's like the ball was already in motion and we had to like deal with it in motion, and that's why we put it off and tabled it a few times to try to get it, to get explanation and to try to get clarification, which just didn't happen.
Who was asked for clarification? Who did you, what entity did you ask?
We went through Ron.
Yeah, through Ron, who was in contact with the BSBA.
So if we do what the planning policy recommends, we will revert to our old policy in the interim anyway before? Right, that would be, still be in force, as far as I can investigate, yeah.
Don't worry, there will be some sort of guidelines for pupil privacy.
Right. So was the old one, I mean, I'm just looking at the, at the edit back from when we first got it. Was it originally called student surveys, or was it called pupil privacy rights slash student surveys?
I believe it was pupil privacy rights slash student surveys.
What do the principals do now in the case of a student survey or other administration of, yeah, student surveys? Is there something that you use other than this current policy as guidance on what's allowed and what's not allowed?
We use that and just federal student policy, so.
So you're okay with working with the old, the old policy?
Okay.
Like I said, I think the intent of policies, I think, are identical. It's just not clear.
Okay, well, then, there's been a motion and second, I believe, and we took the key to, the motion being that you recommend that we not approve policy.
Yes, I recommend we vote no on this.
Vote no on policy number F-30, pupil privacy rights, so we will proceed. The motion was to accept the policy.
Yes, the motion was to accept the policy.
And the recommendation, this discussion was to vote no.
Right, was to approve adoption of F-30. So in that case, all in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, so we have not adopted that policy. We remain under the current policy for the time being until we work on through this. I just have a question about, since we do have three readings, couldn't this discussion have happened after the second reading?
We were still, well, if I, if I may, we were still trying to get clarification as to the changes after the second reading, and...
But you were definitely not, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't acceptable to the planning policy committee at that time.
Well, no, after, at the time of the second reading, we were, we still didn't have any, we, we had no answer from them, from BSBA and from above. We were waiting for those answers. So it got through second reading.
We've asked this question over and over again.
Yeah.
Got no response, so finally we just reached this point where...
Right, so that's why, that's why we kept putting off the final reading, trying to give them an opportunity to answer the questions, and they didn't, so.
So when we go, go through it again, it will be based on our input, and we won't be waiting for anybody else's answers.
Exactly.
Determine what, what we feel comfortable with and run it through and see what happens.
Yep.
Okay, is there anything else under unfinished business? If not, we'll move on to new business, and the first item there is to approve the People's United Bank Resolution to establish a bank account for BUHS trust fund dispersments. And this has been reviewed and approved by the finance committee. Basically, as part of our audit procedures, certain things are recommended to be set up with, with separate bank accounts, and it makes things more appropriate, easier to track. And Frank has been in touch with various banks and has requested that the two new bank accounts be set up. And the first one, as I just mentioned, is with People's United Bank, and that is the bank account for trust fund dispers, dispersments, which, the line share of which is the Eames, Eames money that we have, we have managed for us, and any other, any other trust funds. So that would just put that in a separate account. So what we're asking the board to do is simply bless, I guess, the finance committee agreement to allow Frank and the principal signers, I believe, and I don't have the actual resolution with me. I guess Ron originally was going to be here tonight with it, but it's basically Ron and Frank would be the signers on this account. And I would ask that we approve that one separately because the next one is, is the same type of a thing, but it's for a different, different account, so I'd like to do them one at a time. And I would appreciate a motion to approve the People's United Resolution to establish a bank account for BUHS trust fund dispersments.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve People's United Bank Resolution to establish a bank account for BUHS trust fund dispersments.
Okay. Further questions or comments? Well, I, I think the, what's going to happen is that some of the dispersments from the Eames Fund will go into this, and then the, the checks written to the students specifically for the Eames Fund will come out of it. So I think it was really, it was a simplification Right. And a clarification move. Yeah, it's not that we're going to put all the money that we have in that fund, take it out of the investment that is in, and put it in a checking account. It's the money that has to move through and be paid out to the students.
Frank said it would be a better way of tracking dispersment of the funds.
Right. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Is this standard sort of a group, because usually, as you say, we should have that same, but is this standard, I put in with the two signatures?
Right, right. And this has nothing to do with approval of how many scholarships we give out or, or whatever, it's just based on the actual, the mechanics of the bank account. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, that is passed. Secondly, we have a similar resolution, and this, in this case, it's with Merchants Bank, and that's to establish a bank account for BUHS capital fund dispersments. And again, that is based on recommendations of our audit, was to have that as a, a separate fund, to make it simpler, cleaner, easy to track for capital, capital fund dispersments. And we have, we've twice now put 150,000 into the fund for capital improvements, and we, we will put some of it into the auditorium roof this year, as, as voted on at the annual meeting, but the rest of that fund would be in a separate account. meeting, but rest of that fund would be in a separate account from the Merchants Bank. Is there a motion to accept that resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the Merchants Bank Resolution to Establish a Bank Account for BUHS Capital Fund Disbursements.
Thank you. Second, second by Ricky. You all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Hearing none. That is approved unanimously.
If I, if I could, I just realized that when you were talking about the audit, we did have a SU Finance Committee meeting prior. We went over the audit, and it was a totally clean audit, with no recommendations, no footnotes or anything. So, it was pretty remarkable. It was very good. So, we did have, I got my, my timing wrong.
Oh, thank you.
Let the, let the record show.
Let the record show.
Yeah, so, it was great, this is, you know, Frank's first, first hearing. He spent a lot of time following recommendations from the last audit, and, you know, an unqualified audit of this thing, which is really good. And he thanked Jim for being around and helping out, and for the staff at the SU for, for pulling it through, so.
I have a question, if I could. If I can go back to the, the first one, People's United Bank. It's a little different than the second one, and the second one is going to have a deposit for all the capital fund improvements. All the money's going to go into it. But, in the, the first one, it'll be proceeds from a, an investment vehicle. So, may, could we have a discussion at the Finance Committee meeting to clarify how that will be done, how much money will go into that fund, I mean, into that bank account? In other words, it's not clear in my mind that, you know, all the proceeds from the Eames Fund isn't going to go to that bank account. It's going to be an amount for the dispersal to the scholarships.
A dispersal, yeah.
So, it's a little bit, it's not quite as clear, because we really don't know how many students will apply, and what the interest in that scholarship will be.
Well, yeah, that can be taken out of our investments whenever necessary, once it's determined, you know, how many, how many kids we have.
So, the, the dispersal to the fund will follow the need according to the amount of interest that is shown in the Eames Scholarship?
Yeah, and I, I assume there's probably a base amount that, you know, working, that would be kept in there, very, very small. And we, we can talk about that, fine, just to get clarification from Frank, if there's a, you know, a lot of these accounts have a minimum to avoid fees and so forth. But it basically would be a very, very small percentage, and then mostly, it would be working funds.
Yeah, because I think the Eames Fund is dispersed over three years' time. So, you know, when the first year is awarded, that you have to have three years' worth of awards in the bank account.
Well, yes, in the, in the, in the investment surplus, you have to have that much. Although, there have been occasions, I believe, when a student has not continued on with school. I mean, there's, could be a few exceptions, one way or another.
So, it's a little less, it's a little less clear, I mean, a little less clear cut than the second one, which is, which is really like an escrow account.
Yeah, but we want to be clear that we're not putting all our money into cash, you know, because the investment program has worked out very well over the years.
Thank you.
Okay. And we move on to LBP-1, what we've all been waiting for.
Yeah, but we've...
Student Dress Code.
We spent quite a bit of time talking to people and gathering opinions and data about the dress code. First thing, we had to identify what the problem was with our old dress code, and the lack of equal enforcement, or even enforcement...
Can I have you look at it?
Was, by and large, the biggest complaint in discussion with the administration. You know, we talked about even enforcement, and it's pretty clear that achieving truly equal enforcement isn't really feasible. There are too many infractions, they're too easily covered up when you come to school, where they're mostly seen, and there is a lot of subjectivity in the current dress code policy. There's the whole line about different body types having a different effect on your garments, that's a judgment call. There's a line about excess cleavage, what's that mean? Yeah, it's, it's a very subjective code, which makes it impossible to truly have equal enforcement. I would also say that although students, by and large, said that they were comfortable with the policy, the fact that there are so many infractions that makes it difficult to enforce would suggest that perhaps their poll answer is a little different than how they address the policy in practice. Largely, the issues come down to one section of the policy, which is the specifics of apparel. There don't seem to be a lot of complaints about violent motifs, or drug paraphernalia, or anything like that. It's all about the clothing choices, and specifically, mostly, the female clothing choices, because that's what almost all of the apparel section is about. Which led us to the question of, why are we judging fashion? Why do we need to be doing this at all? And the answer, really, we have two answers for that. One, we were given extreme examples, then, we would see, and we all agreed that we shouldn't see those things with short, so short, that you can see cheeks hanging out, shirts that you can see right through, things like that. And yes, obviously, those are extreme examples, and we need policy against those. The other is just what is professionally appropriate. However, the problem with addressing what is professionally appropriate is that we are only addressing one category of appropriateness, and that is revealing clothing. We don't address dirty clothing, we don't address ripped clothing, we don't address ill-fitting clothing, just revealing clothing. It doesn't make any sense to me, and the committee general agreed with this, that we address only one subset of inappropriate professional clothing. There are reasons not to address ripped clothing and dirty clothing. There could be economic factors in play, but that doesn't change the fact that we are addressing only one subset of what we feel is inappropriate. So, you can see that in our proposal, we have done away with most of those garment restrictions. Keeping language in place to deal with those extreme examples, and to try to figure out what language to use for those, I went right to the town of Bratavura, because we have just recently had a big discussion about what's appropriate to wear in public. So, I took the language right from the nudity ordinance, and that's what it is. And that language is, clothing must cover the human male or female genitals, pubic area and buttocks, and any portion of the areola with a fully opaque covering. There was some concern about use of that terminology, but my feeling is that our kids have all had health classes, they are familiar with actual terms. So, that's what we have, that's what we have given you.
How does that all jive with what we got from input from students and administrators?
Well, we, Ian was kind of to send us a copy of the proposal, and so, the BUHS Number Six Administrator sat down with Dr. Staley, and we kind of looked at it, and kind of came up with something else, that kind of builds off of what Ian had. You know, I agree with a lot of, of what was said. The biggest issue that we had students, and from, and from parents, was consistent enforcement. And it is true, it's hard to enforce, especially on a cool morning, and the student walks in wearing a sweatshirt, and then by mid-morning, they're dressed somewhat differently. That's tough to enforce. Another common issue we got were that it's hard to find long shorts unless I'm shopping with my grandmother. Yes, that was said. The other, the other one of concern, and I share this with Ian, was the issue of targeting females. That was another one that was, was a concern to us. So, as we thought about it, we kind of, you know, sat down, it was, it was an interesting conversation. You know, we sat down and kind of talked about, what do we really want? What are we really trying to retrieve, achieve with the student dress code? And, you know, obviously, safety's a concern, obviously, cleanliness is a concern. To be honest, when we have a student who's wearing clothing that is dirty or, or really ill-fitting, a lot of times, what we do is we get their clothes, we have a supply of clothes, and sometimes a student, you know, we have shower facilities available for students. You know, we provide basic hygiene needs for students, you know, if they need them. You know, so, we kind of try to help out in that regard, because, you know, in middle school and high school is when those hygiene issues really begin to separate, and so, we're very aware of those. So, we kind of sat down, and, and the first paragraph of, of both versions has a very important sentence that, that we think is pretty key. And it's the sentence that says, "That school is a work and learning environment. As such, acceptable standards of dress for a school setting will naturally differ from those standards associated with social attire." And that's, to us, that's, that's a key. That one of the things we are doing is we are preparing our students for either continued education in college, we're preparing them for the world of work, whatever it may be. So, with that in mind, we kind of said, well, how do we, how do we take away, especially in the apparel section, you know, because there is a lot of things there that are gender specific. So, we really kind of said, let's kind of see if we can pare down the things that are regarded as gender-specific.
See, where is that, that language you just quoted?
Uh, in the first paragraph?
Midway down.
Midway down.
School is a work and learning environment?
Yes, yeah. So, we're kind of using that as our theme, how do we, how do we continue to promote that work and learning environment? And so, on, down on page one, one of the things that we looked at is symbols, mottos, words or acronyms of professor violence or hatred. We kind of got rid of towards fellow man, because you kind of think it should be maybe a more global, you know. We don't want people that hate a lot of things, not necessarily their fellow man.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Fellow and man, it's, it's double sexist.
So, then, in the apparel section, we did have concerns about, about the proposed language, so, we kind of went with a, just saying that wearing appropriate apparel, you know, we kind of put that paragraph in, that wearing appropriate apparel is considered responsibility of the student and his, that should be his or her, her, his parent or guardian, either way, with the following limitations. We got rid of the, the long laundry lists of bear, midriff, and such. We just kind of said, examples of prohibited dress are overly revealing apparel and exposed undergarments. One of the issues that we see, especially our exposed undergarments, in, in males as often as in females. You know, the pants that hang down, so we just kind of, so we wanted to make it simple. And, you know, we kind of wanted to involve the parent into that a little bit. What we'd like to do is, we'd like to kind of, we feel like we haven't gotten enough student voice yet, so we'd like to kind of take these drafts and, and share them with, you know, middle school student leadership, high school student leadership, kind of get their sense as well. We haven't done that, because we wanted to wait till the first reading was done before we did anything public, so.
I have two questions, if I may. One is, the, the couple sentences you put in about wearing apparel, wearing appropriate apparel is considered responsibility of that section?
Right.
Some of the wording there feels to me very, very subjective. And what you might consider appropriate might not be something that Chris Day, for instance, or Andy Haas would consider appropriate in the same situation. So, or a teacher might find it completely appropriate, but the next teacher that student has would find it completely inappropriate.
Right.
So, I'm, I'm concerned about that, and I don't know if you've had that conversation or not, but I'm concerned about that. The other piece, as far as sharing with students, I, I mean, I wanted way more student involvement, I thought we were going to have more student involvement in this process all along. My suggestion wouldn't be just the leadership kids, because my experience would prob, my experience with who I know is involved in leadership are not the kids that are frequently violating the dress code. How about the kids that are the frequent flyers that are violating the dress code, having them be part of the student input and process?
Absolutely.
I think that that, just, if they're, if it's, if they're the ones that are constantly getting in trouble for violating the dress code, maybe they should be involved in the process of at least inputting on the dress code. They may not take you up on it, but maybe.
And I guess, to, to speak to the concern about, you know, I guess, the word, you know, being calibrated.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think, as we talked, one of the things we really kind of kept coming back to was that one sentence, you know, what would you wear in a work and learning environment? You know, I don't think it would be a bikini top, which, you know, one could wear under the proposed code. You know, that's not, that's not, you know, I think we can say to a student safely, that's really probably not appropriate. You know, on the other hand, the current code does say, someplace, it says that you can't wear a no strap garment.
No strapless garments, and you can't expose your undergarments, sleeveless garments.
Right, so, there's a, we have some young ladies who, in the springtime, do wear very appropriate, very demure dresses, and, and, you know, full-length dresses that would, you know, they're absolutely appropriate. But, under the current interpretation, with all of these different criteria, they're not. Does that make sense?
No.
So, we kind of wanted to have that ability to say, you know, if somebody were wearing an appropriate sundress that they could wear, you know, to Easter brunch or church, that's, that's okay. Yet, that, you know, that, the tube top probably is not, or the bikini top probably is not.
Yeah, I mean, if I can come with the, the proposal from the committee, first of all, is, the, the first sentence under apparel is very subjective, you know, it's, "All clothing shall not materially interfere with schoolwork, create disorder, disrupt educational process." And that's, I think, yeah, I think the bikini top, or bikini, period, and, or tube top, you know, might fall within that. And then, there's something really specific. And when you get specific, then you start looking at all the examples, and...
Well, all the examples, all the examples are crossed out.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no. Well, well, except, I mean, but there is something very specific, which is the town ordinance. And if there's something difference between the town, I, I don't think there's any way that I could vote for having that, because that's sort of a fallback and the expectation. I mean, if somebody came with something that just covered those things that were listed, that's really inappropriate. Maybe they won't be arrested on the streets, but it's really inappropriate for high school or middle school. So, you know, so, you know, so, the question is, you know, how much discretion do you leave to, you know, to the administrators? How specific do you get in suggestion? And, and that's a tough, that's a, there's not an easy answer to that. So, I mean, it's, I, I, I'm, I myself am not satisfied that we've reached that yet. And, and this is the first time that I've seen the, the administration proposal, and sort of listing sort of examples might be, or something like that. I mean, those, they're, they're still pretty vague. But it's, it's so much in the enforcement. And so, you know, it, it's different in a school than in, you know, statutes in, in the general public, and there are all sorts of notions of consti- And there are all sorts of notions of constitutional vagueness and all sorts of things. But I argued that in moot court in law school at one point. But the high school and the middle school are different. And so, you know, so I think something somewhat vague, but with some sort of respect and understanding on both sides and some sort of process for sort of a quick, whoa, this isn't, this isn't appropriate, you know. I'm not sure what that is. But I think, you know, something really specific, I don't think will, will cause more problems than it solves, I think. Something totally vague, you know, it's up to the principal to decide, you know, that's too much. So some sort of guideline, some sort of halfway medium, I think is, it needs to be there. And I'm not sure that the proposed language does that.
And that language was actually, you know, we took that language from South Burlington and Burlington. We took their dress codes.
Which ones are that?
We took, as we were talking about this, we looked at several schools in the area. We looked at Rutland, we looked at North Country, we looked at Burlington, we looked at South Burlington. And we kind of compare all of those different dress codes. You know, where do they, is the word distraction used? And that turns out that's a legal term to talk about distraction from the educational environment. We looked at length of shorts, you know, where did they put that in their dress codes? We looked at undergarments allowed to be exposed. And then what we did is we took language from South Burlington, we took language from Burlington, we combined the two to come up with that apparel paragraph.
So this introduces a less, either way, less quantitative way of looking at this. And that's where my question, I guess, is, is administrator, are they comfortable with having a less quantitative way? And is that actually maybe a better, better way to do it? And.
I think, and I guess I'll let Keith and Mike speak for themselves, but I think it's a lot easier than having students, you know, walking by you, pulling down their shorts.
We don't want that.
Well, I meant.
Oh, like down the bar.
Sorry. Thank you.
Just brushing that.
Right.
Oh, so it's long enough.
So it's long and pensive.
Actually, let me address one of Russ's points. I'm not fully comfortable with the language that we put forth in our initial presentation either. I had thought about the bikini thing, and I'm like, oh, yeah, we'll need to fix that. But as Steve said, a lot of this discussion has to really come out in the give and take after this first reading. So I did not anticipate that this would be the final product that comes out of this. It's just now is the time that we all need to discuss it rather than just gathering information in committee.
And I'd also add that we give a lot of discretion in all sorts of places in terms of discipline and, you know, discipline, we have very sort of general guidelines, it only comes to the board, and very specific areas. And so we give, I mean, that's, that's why we hire professionals to do it, and that's why we don't run the day-to-day operations.
I like this policy that the administration has brought back to us a whole lot better than I like the.
Is it like the existing?
The existing one.
The existing one.
Yeah.
I like mine better than the existing one.
I just, not to defend the existing one, but I'm one of the few members of the board that was actually here when the existing one was written all those years ago. And that was written, and those specifics were requested by the administration at the time.
Yes.
They wanted those things in there. They wanted clear guidelines. They wanted to be chasing people with rulers apparently, to be measuring lengths of skirts and shorts or whatever, which the current administration doesn't. You know what I mean? So it's a very, it feels like a very, it's just a shift.
I was also there, and I remember it very well. And I would just like to commend the planning policy committee and also the administration. I think, you know, whatever we come up with, I think it's a lot better than the existing policy. And I've always felt like the existing policy really in many ways had a gender bias, which I think the new policy is going to obfuscate, which is very important. I think it's very important. So I'd just like to commend the planning policy and the administration for working hard on this. And I think no matter what, it's going to be, it's going to be an improved policy.
All right.
I know one of the concerns from the faculty and staff has been that they have to have a confrontation with their students during class time, send them to the office. So I don't know if we can support them in a way that they're not doing as much of the monitoring. I know that both proposed policies will address that. I don't know how we can, we take some of the heat up of the teachers.
Well, we try to encourage them not to pull a student out in the middle of class or create conflict during class, unless it's something really over the top. But, I mean, I certainly feel like all the staff have a shared responsibility. If they see something that is crossing a line, whether it's that or some policy on cell phones or anything in the handbook, that they have a responsibility to, to help with that. And, you know, I don't know about Michael or Steve, but I, 300 students and two administrators were, you know, we don't have that kind of, that was our sole job to go around and check all 300 kids. But we all, as a full staff, have that kind of responsibility of, some of them might be a little uncomfortable confronting a student about it, which is understandable, especially with something like dress code. But, you know, we need their help with it. So I don't, I don't know if anybody else has a.
I mean, I think it's tough. I wouldn't want to go into a position where some policies are enforced by everybody and some are not. So, you know, I think Keith's right, we all have the shared responsibility. And our, by and large, the high school staff don't, you know, they don't point kids out. They don't, you know, tag them with a scarlet letter. They just pull them aside and say, that's not okay. And if they're uncomfortable, they'll call down to the administrative office and say, could you have somebody check out what X, Y, Z is wearing?
Whatever we end up with, I think the key words in this whole thing to me are expectation that students dress appropriately for the school setting. And so there's two sides to that. One is it's somewhat subjective, but I think we have to eventually come to a general consensus as to what's acceptable. And then secondly, have the students in general agree that that is what is acceptable. Not that they're all going to adhere to it. But it's, school is, it's a work and a learning environment. And as such, there are certain basic acceptable modes of dress. And it seems like it might take a little more work to get there, but we're, we've got it all out there. And I hope we can get more input from other stakeholders as we go on to a second revision and second reading.
I think that one key, like Ricky was saying, this, this one is a lot more subjective. And really, the subjective bit in what the administration brought us is three words, over-revealing apparel. What is that? And that's, that's the thing, because everybody is going to have a different idea about what is overly revealing. So that's the one I think we somehow need to narrow that down a little more so that everybody knows if we're on the same page.
Yeah, I think that's the trade-off, because otherwise you're going to have people going around with rulers or something like that. Because the problem that there was, when I was in junior high, there were the assistant principals going around with rulers and real down and measuring. And then the next year, there was, as far as students knew, there was no dress code. I mean, no one, but, you know, it, so that's the trouble of getting into specificity. I mean, it's good for guidance, but then you get these outliers. And, I mean, I'd be really interested in what, you know, what the students say. And, you know, they're comfortable with, I mean, I don't know how to gauge that and how to engage the students and how to then gauge what their reaction is.
A cross-section of the students.
Yeah, but it's, you know, there's some sort of, I mean, there does need to be some guidance so it isn't just, you know, some standard of non-revealing. I mean, what does that mean? And there are some suggestions, I think, you know, it went a little bit farther. Examples are, so maybe, you know, by fleshing out, I didn't mean to say that. You know, giving more, giving more examples of these are things that might. So it's sort of, you know, put up, so it's sort of like, you know, the strapless, it's not the strapless that's the problem. It's the revealing. I mean, we sort of know it. The Supreme Court definition of obscenity is basically you know it when you see it. And that's the best of the legal standard. And that's, that's sort of what we're talking about here. But there's got to be sort of that trust and, and part of, you know, we review the performance of administrators. I mean, that's, that's one of our principal roles as a board, is that we give them latitude. They're the experts in the field. And if there are a lot of complaints, I mean, we should know about it. And there's a review process, you know, in terms of giving feedback and those sorts of things. So I, you know, so, but anyways, there's something, something general, but with some sort of general guidelines so we don't have people going around with rulers and that type of thing. And maybe some discussions of, wow, you know, that seems, you know, and not just, you know, punish somebody for being revealing, but some sort of prospect, is that or isn't it? And sort of get a gauge of what the community standard is.
Or a discussion with that specific student.
Yeah, with the student.
Obviously, if something is an extreme example, like a bikini top, everyone would agree that's inappropriate. And, you know, that.
Including a student who's wearing it.
But if it's, gee, your skirts are a little too short, that I feel is more appropriate to just have a one-on-one discussion rather than make it some rulesy policy.
Well, all of those, you know, for all students, when we meet with them, the dress code, it's a discussion. In the first time, it's, you know, it's, can we get you something to, you know, can you get something else to wear if it's a violation of the dress code? It's not, you know, we're not giving detentions, we're not suspending kids. I mean, it's not that way. It's a discussion about, this is not appropriate for school. And I guess for us, the other thing is, you know, when we went through the examples, we chose to because we didn't want to go back to the list.
Right.
So we just kind of said, here are two general things. Because overly revealing apparel, that can cover, you know, a midriff shirt that is too revealing. It can also cover the shirts that males wear on the side that have the sleeves that come all the way down and a waist.
You know, I mean, I don't, I mean, I'd be interested in what other, other suggestions are. If your suggestion doesn't, doesn't jump out as being, as being bad. I mean, it's a good, a good approximation of it. And I'd be interested in what other, other people, including students, say about that. Do they want more guidance or do they? Because, you know, to get to the specifics of the town by law, I mean, that's just, that's totally inappropriate, I think, for a high school setting. And so I don't think those are the sort of guidelines to give. But, so where is it between the town guidelines and, which I think are too limited, and the current guidelines, which are too restrictive and too inaccurate? You know, where's, where's that halfway meeting? And then allow a lot of it to play out and see how it's enforced and how it's received. And then adjust as it goes into place.
It's, given the fact that we're into early April, I think, I would hope that this would move along. I realize there's quite a bit of work to be done, but we'll move along so that when we get into session next fall, we have a dress code policy in place that can be communicated ahead of it. Is that reasonable?
Our handbook we're going to press probably in two or three weeks. So what we'll do is, last time we revised the policy, we just said the BUHS dress code is currently under revision.
Yeah.
And so the print version won't have, they'll just have that disclaimer. And then when we get it, when we put the version online, it'll have the whole dress code in there.
Obviously, any input from students has to happen in the next month or so before we get too close to finals and graduation and all that stuff.
Maybe the weather will just stay cold for the next two, three months, so there won't be that.
Well, it's a tough assignment. We appreciate the work of the policy committee. We knew this one wasn't going to be easy.
Can I ask, Steve, is it currently much of a problem?
Um, not, not right now. I mean, two weeks, after April break, you will be.
First day of school in the fall, especially if it's a warm day.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I come to this building from time to time. And I do observe that there are plenty of students and adults in this building that I see who really strictly don't adhere to the current dress code. I don't say anything because I know that people have more important things to do here than go around tapping adults on the shoulder and saying, hey, you know, your dress really isn't appropriate. Or hauling students in and out of the hallway with greater frequency than the deputy sheriff hauls over speeders in Dumerson Center on a weekend.
I thought you were going to say burning.
Well, you know, Dumerson Center is pretty busy. But it's, really, I think the dress code that we have is so restrictive as to be unenforceable, and therefore we might just as well not have one. I would like to see us come up with something that would be enforceable and would teach students who don't already know how the proper dress for school or business. Because when they leave the school, supposedly they're going to be going either to further schooling where their dress will become even worse before it gets better. I'm sure Russ will agree with me. Or they will be going out into the workforce. And Mr. Woodworth, I'm sure that some of the students that I've seen in this school, dressed as they were, you would not want working behind the counter in your business.
That's probably true.
So I know Mr. Stinchfield is no longer here, and things change, but.
Is that really his name?
That was his real name.
Yes, it was.
In fact, however, I was at a whole-school event in the auditorium at one point where a visiting gentleman was making a presentation to the school. And he said, "Good morning, ladies and gentlemen and Mr. Stinchfield." There were however many, 900 and something, students in that auditorium, all went, huh, at once. And Mr. Stinchfield sat there with his stone face.
And that's what it was like in the olden days.
Of course, it's time.
Let's, keep this moving along, both this evening and the whole process. And we appreciate the work of the policy committee and administrators.
Definitely. I'm glad I'm not on that committee.
I was just wondering where the next planning policy is going to meet? And would you welcome other work?
Absolutely. We'll have another meeting before the next board meeting.
It'll be posted, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that would, yeah, if you have an interest in it or you're able to join, it's always great to have extra input at committee meetings.
And if administration and students want to come to that meeting to give input into dress code, that's the only thing on our agenda, so we will be talking about that. That's the meeting during April break, right? We're having that meeting.
Yeah, there will be two, so we'll be during April break. Yeah, it'll be Tuesday, so it'll be during April break.
Speaking of which, one is a...
Our next board meeting, we, I believe we agreed to continue on and have it, even though it is during the break.
Twenty.
It should be the 20th.
And we are having policy, too?
Yes.
And the kids won't be around? Will be on break?
It could be. They all live in town?
Well, they don't.
Well, near town.
Many towns to this area.
In the area of that.
For Dumerson, Putney, and Brattleboro. Okay, is there any other new business?
Mr. Chairman, could I query the other two members of the SU board as to whether they're going to be able to attend the meeting tomorrow evening?
Yeah.
Good. We'll be all triumphant.
A triumvirate. Great. Okay, if there's nothing else, there's...
Mr. Chairman, I know we enjoy...
Second.
All right.